All right, welcome everyone. I'm going to call this meeting of the Monroe County Council to order. It is Tuesday, August 8th, and we are having regular session. And in the room with me is Counselor Hawk, Counselor McKim, Counselor Deckard, and Counselor Iverson. And on Zoom, we have Counselor Crossley. We are expecting Counselor Munson. And I am not seeing her yet as a panelist, but if T S D could be watching, she should be tuning in. But we will go ahead and get started. And the very first thing we need to do is say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Of America.
And to the republic stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And now we have the adoption of the agenda. Are there any counselors who would like to add or remove items from tonight's agenda or otherwise edit?
I'm trying to turn the sound off on this because I'm afraid that might be. I just wanted to see if we could do the discussion of the lit before we discuss the council budget in case there's anyone who wants to participate in that.
So the discussion of the.
Discussion of the lit is scheduled.
Ten A.
Right. It's right together. It's just that we could get the discussion of the lit done first.
I see. So you'd like to tend the to ten A.
To ten A, right.
Those two. I'm going to take that as a motion.
Yes, thank you.
Any comments on that switcheroo? Okay, since we have participants. Since we have participants online, we need to do a roll call vote. And that's the changing of the agenda since my mic was off.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Are there any other changes desired to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, let us move to public comment. So this will be public comment for items not on our agenda. And if anyone would like to make comment here in the Nat U Hill Room, please just come to the podium. We'll do three minutes. And if anyone on Zoom has a public comment, just raise your hand. We do have one hand raised on Zoom. Mr. Shelton, if you could be allowed to speak, that would be great.
Good evening, Council. Jim Shelton with the Chamber of Congress is speaking right now on behalf of court-appointed special advocates for CASAs. Want to make the public aware that CASA's fall training is coming up pretty soon. It will be March, I'm sorry, March. It'll be September 19th through October 19th. They are changing the hours in hopes it'll make it available to a new group of people. It will be in the mornings instead of the evenings. So it will be Tuesday and Thursday mornings from 10 to 1:00. Applications will be due September the 8th. So for folks who are interested and have been thinking about it out there, maybe this time slot will work better for you than in the evenings. But in any case, be aware, folks, that we still need people to volunteer to service CASAs to represent these kids who have been abused or neglected by their parents and are therefore involved in the court system. Your job's basically to be another set of eyes and ears for the court to help the judge know what's going on with the children and what's going on with their parents as they try to get reunited with the children. So please think about volunteering to do this. For more info, you can go on monroecountycasa.org, click on the volunteer link, but then you'll see an orientation and training link. And you can go right there and fill out the application because that's the first step to getting involved. And then you would be interviewed by the staff. And then if you and they both think you might be a good candidate, then the training starts again September 19th and runs through October 19th. It's a great opportunity to help children. It's a very satisfying opportunity. It can be hard at times, but in the end, you'll end up either helping the children get reunited with their parents or helping them get adopted if that's the best opportunity for the child. So thank you for the opportunity to share that information with everybody. And thank you very much for supporting the CASA program because you guys fund about a third of the budget for the program. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. It's an important message to get out there. Between the volume being a little low in the courtroom and the captions being provided via Zoom, I just wanted to confirm that the website that you gave was Monroe County CASA? I don't even know if he's still there. See, it doesn't even say it right. Perfect.
All Monroe County CASA all run together is one word, dot org. And then there's a link. Click on volunteer or drop down a menu and one of the options is orientation and training.
Great, thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to make comments either here Okay, seeing none, I wanted to acknowledge that Counselor Munson has joined us. And we will move to department updates. Our first department update that I know of is from the Board of Commissioners. And it looks like we have Commissioner Githens with us this evening. Welcome.
Hi, thanks for letting me speak tonight. First of all, I wanted to invite the members of the county council to attend session with the Bloomington Common Council Work Session this Friday at noon to discuss potential jail sites within city limits. So I have a sheet here that's got the information on it. I'll pass it around to you in just a second. But the main reason I'm here is to bring you our 144s. I know that electronic copy has been sent to Michelle, so hopefully she's forwarded that. But these forms were presented to the county commissioners in July, and we are in accordance with what was given to us. And we are proposing that all positions receive a wage increase of 8.5%. And I know this is a lot, but this is actually what we would need for COLA, for cost of living, to really allow our employees to keep up with what it costs here. We know that we live in what is probably the most expensive county in the state, and our cost of living here is higher than at other places. There was been some discussion about the fact that the state has suggested that there be a 7.8% increase for the probation department, but that was statewide. They're only proposing 6.1% here because of the raise that you all approved across the board for employees here last year. So this would also give probation department an 8.5%. And I heard a comment today that really struck me, and that is that too many of our own employees cannot afford to live within the county. And I would like to see that changed. So I think that by providing just even this cost of living increase will make a difference. I actually personally would like to see it more than 8.5%, but I think that goes beyond a little bit of what I was authorized to say. So anyway, I'd like to hand this to you, and I thank you for your time. If you've got questions, happy to answer them.
Thank you. Appreciate your being here. Do any counselors have questions for Commissioner Githens? Okay. Thanks very much.
I'm just going to sign in.
I'm going to test that that way and bring it back. I think our next department update then will be from our GIS coordinator, sorry, Mr. Baton. And we've asked him to give a demonstration of the GIS mapping that he's done and our county surveyors here as well. Welcome.
Yes, hi. So we decided to give a office update from the surveyor's office with the GIS division within. So I know John's here for kind of the big part of this, but also I haven't been here to give the council an update in quite a while. And first and foremost, we haven't been able to be this successful without your support. And one of those milestones was just the approval of the GIS technician in May. Thank you so much. Another milestone from the support of the county commissioners was our expansion of our ELA. So we have more license, which means more tools to provide county employees to see more things like you're about to witness. I'll go ahead and share my screen and then pass it over to Dr. John Baton, our GIS coordinator, to kind of give you a rundown.
Thanks for having me today. This, what I'm going to show you here is a website that we've created highlighting community resources across Monroe County. And so this was an idea that was passed on to me by council member Munson, and I've since kind of deployed it. This is a work in progress, and I expect to have some feedback from you, the commissioners, other specialists, and then also the public. The easy way to get to this website, if anybody is interested, is in my URL right here. It's HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash tinyurl.com forward slash Monroe County Resource Map. You can hit enter on that, and this will load. You can see a little splash screen when it does load. Here's a splash screen kind of giving information about how the site functions and things of that nature, along with a link down here for the public to input data in a survey that I'll show you here in a second. I'm going to open this in a new tab just so it populates. I'm going to hit okay here. What you can see on this map is resources. It's actually 60 resources that have been mapped and symbolized for Monroe County. Oh, I can see that my legend, oh, actually, the legend's not blanked out here. It's blanked out on my screen. The legend here on the right is showing the different types of resources that are mapped, so things like pantries, food, prepared meals, places that offer financial assistance, medical health and recovery, legal and judicial help, shelters, clothing and furniture, housing, as well as bus stops and bus routes. As you zoom in on the map, bus stops will appear. You can click on a bus stop, and what you'll see is the name of the bus stop. So this is the Whitehall Plaza at Planet Fitness, as well as a link that brings you to the City of Bloomington's double map, web map as well, that shows where maps are in real time. I'll just close out of that. All these icons, when you click on one of them, for instance, this shelter here, you will get a pop-up. This is the Wheeler Mission for Men. It gives the name of the shelter, what type of facility it is, its address, contact number, and hours of operation, right? This is all fairly basic mapping, nothing too spectacular here. There are some cool things that we've embedded into this map, though. So I'm going to hit home again, which will bring us out to the initial extent. What you can do is utilize this find resources near me widget on the top left. Once I click this, I'm going to have the opportunity to say, I want to know where I am in terms of the GIS by clicking on this icon. This is going to locate me here. I'm going to allow GIS to locate me. And I'm going to say that this map is going to show me resources within a one-mile radius of where I am. So on the map here, you can see the one-mile radius drawn around me in a circle, along with the 23 resources that are located within one mile of the Monroe County Courthouse. I can click on this resource link here, and it brings me all of the different facilities, as well as how far they are from me. So if I want to go to the Feed the Needy Second Baptist Church, which is .19 miles, I would click on that. And then I also have the opportunity here to get directions by clicking the directions tab. So it's going to tell me how to get there. Oh, it should. That's one of the little hiccups there. I'm just going to head back here. One last bit of functionality here is a filter that allows you to filter out what type of resource you want to see. And so on the map, you could say resource type. I'm going to do a dropdown here just to financial assistance, and the map will isolate only those facilities that actually provide financial assistance. So most of these are the different township representatives. I mentioned earlier that this map does offer the public input to allow us to actually add resources to this map. That is this icon right here, as well as on the splash screen, which brings us to a survey essentially, which I'll load right here, where the public can offer suggestions for other facilities to be added to this map. And so they can basically drop a point on the map, name of the resource, what type of resource it is, and then the website. And so this stuff will be vetted before it gets added to the map, obviously, by myself. So we're not adding, you know, something that's not a resource. But yeah, so this is the Monroe County Community Resource Map. Again, you can find this website and this resource at the tiny URL that I provided before, tinyurl.com Monroe County Resource Map. And I'm happy to answer any questions or anything like that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll turn on my mic. Thank you. That's very cool. Very cool, and I appreciate your work on it. And I know you mentioned this, but Counselor Munson was the one who came to everyone with this idea, and I just wanted to thank her. I'm not sure if she's still on or just has her camera off. But I had a couple of questions, and then I'll let everybody else go. Is this scalable for use on a phone? Is it for mobile yet?
It is. It depends on the size of the phone and also kind of the functionality of the phone. I have a smaller iPhone, and so things are a little bit clunky for me. It does work, and that's kind of where that. The location finder is really helpful because your phone's generally doing that already.
Right, right. Okay, okay. And I see that you can search in the little bar at the upper left. Do you have keywords besides those categories?
Sure.
That you can search for?
Yep, and so I've limited this search to just addresses within Monroe County. And so for instance, if I type in 3623 South, I'm going to be limited to just addresses in Monroe County that have that, including my address in beautiful Sherwood Oaks in South Bloomington. You can also type in something like Shalom, so S-H-A-L. And what that will do is bring up that resource. And so if I want to go to the Shalom Center, I'm going to click that, and it will bring me to the Shalom Center. And then from there, you can also.
Great.
There's some more limitations we can make for it, but yeah.
Are you able to add keywords? So if we come up with something that isn't part of the name or address, but might be a useful.
Sure.
Thing, we could tag places.
So how I built this was Cheryl provided a number of resources, and I went through those resources, mapped them, but also made sure that the facility still existed and that the contact information was right and things like that. I've broken this legend where you can see like the pantry, food, prepared meals, based off of one of the resources that she provided. So we can tailor that however the council sees fit, however the commissioners see fit, however the public sees fit. I like to make this as intuitive as possible.
Great.
One of the challenges for this was trying to, I guess, pigeonhole these different facilities into a specific category when they might be providing multiple different types of services, right? So for instance, I have the Shalom Center as just a food pantry right now, and I know it provides more services than just that, so.
Will you be able to add categories to a location?
Yep, it would just be essentially two points on the Shalom Center at once. And so it would be Shalom as a pantry, then Shalom as a community resource or something like that.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Counselor Munson has her hand raised now. Go ahead.
I just want to congratulate John Baton on an amazing work product here. This is much grander than I had envisioned, and he has brought so much to this. I'm hoping it is a resource that will be used by many people in the county. And I want to thank him and our surveyor, Ron Inordrandle, because their work is really important to the county. And they may not have thought they were very involved with community resources, but they definitely are. They helped county government a lot with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and see, are there questions to my left? Counselor Iverson?
Yeah, I've got three questions for you. First of all, this is fantastic. I think this is the right direction that county needs to be headed is using this technology. My first question is, you know, what's going to count as a community resource and what's not going to count as a community resource?
That's kind of up to, I would say, experts. I defer to expertise here. And so my resource as an individual, my resources in Monroe County are probably different than a lot of others. What I believe the original impetus of this was, was resources for people that are kind of within or just leaving the justice system, right? I tried to expand that a little bit further, though, because I know there are a lot of people who are not in the justice system that are still utilizing these resources on a daily, day-to-day basis. So I think that's something that maybe we need some brainstorming over. But I think that what I've tried to do is reflect what has been done in the past with, you know, I would prefer some guidance from other experts.
Yeah, courts and probation have an exhaustive list of organizations that they work with. That's probably a good start. If you can't find it, I think I can get it to you, or they can too.
Cool.
My second question is, I see our health department is in the room. Have you talked with them yet about the mapping project that they're working on? It's, I think there's some interesting overlap that could happen, and I just encourage you to talk to the health department.
Sure.
It's different, but there's enough similarities that I think there could be some great synergies between what the health department and Purdue Extension are working on and what you guys are working on.
Okay.
This could be a really cool project.
Sure. One of the things I was planning on including in this was a location of where Sharp's disposal facilities are, as well as Narcan Distribution Centers. Again, those are things that I would seek out some advice from health department.
Yeah, there's a lot of interest here. My last question is, how hard is this to keep updated? Like, are you going to have to go into this system on a monthly basis and take out old phone numbers and old addresses? And is this going to be a burden on you?
I mean, it's not a big burden, really. This is data that I can update fairly rapidly, and thanks to the efforts of the council, we also have offered a position of GIS technician to a great candidate who's starting in the end of the month, who's going to really help kind of lower my work. So and then also with that survey that we've deployed, that's going to allow for the public to really input that.
That's good to hear.
And with the expansion of our licenses, we'll be able to empower others that are more versed in this, that can help maintain these. So it's going to still be a collaborative effort because we still only have two full-time people dedicated to GIS, but we'll be able to give them the tools to keep this up to date, take down things when they're not available anymore. But we'll have to work with them to give them those tools so that can be kept up. But not saying that we can't keep up with a lot of this. It's just, it's going to be more of a collaborative measure. Like he was saying, he's not the expert in all of these locations, so that's why we defer to the information that we receive. And this is really kind of a demo to show how we can start using this type of technology.
Yeah, I really see the utility here, but I also see that if it's not kept up, the utility dissipates pretty quickly.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
And I have full confidence that you're going to keep it up. My question is not questioning your ability, but rather, you know, just making sure that.
Yeah, this is 60 points. I see this probably doubling in size for all the resources across Monroe County. 120 data points is 120 data points, right? There's a lot bigger data sets than that, so this is something that's manageable and it's something that's useful, so.
Great, thanks. Those are all my questions.
Counselor Deckard?
Thank you very much, and I appreciate it very much, Counselor Munson, for helping us with this, as well as the surveyor and your hard work. One thing that occurs to me, years ago, we would have made a handout of some sort that would have listed every resource available, and then we would have put it in a desk or it would have gone to folks that had access to it and not maybe to people that need that information. This strikes me as something, and I'm going to throw this out for all listening, and if people can work with it, maybe. If not, then they should move on down the road and ignore me. But this strikes me as information that with a QR code that indicated resources, folks could scan from their phone and then look up wherever they're at, that we could have in some of our buildings, the health department, Justice Building, the courthouse in our rotunda, the library, if they would, that's their decision, but we could have actual monitors that took people to this information. So this building here, for example, would not just be accessible for those of us coming to these meetings, but would be accessible for resources of folks that need it. I mean, there are many other things that folks need, but this strikes me as something that could be a living document, accessible for individuals who are perhaps relying on a phone, need to get to the monitor, see a QR code, want to check an updated hour on fill in the blank. That strikes me as that, and that could be fairly exhaustive in locations, post office, you name it. So I know I'm putting words in a lot of folks' mouths that I don't make decisions for, but what I want to make sure is that your hard work, the surveyor's indulgence of this project away from other priorities I'm sure he's got, and Counselor Munson's idea, doesn't become something that goes into that drawer, because that's what happens. And then we find a 1996 resource list that goes to the history center, but it's been readied by as many people. This is a good thing. This is awesome. It looks like something you would see in any other search, and that, to me, speaks highly of it. So thank you.
I just wanted to speak to that, and that's why I've been to the council numerous times asking for additional support with our GIS division. And one of my core goals is quality assurance, and that means not shelving projects, not letting information become static, being able to depend on the information. And John is a perfect lead, and we're bringing in another powerhouse member here in a few weeks, and it's just going to really be a game changer. And also with the expansion of the license and the support from the commissioners, we can give access to people that aren't county employees. So, you know, if there's volunteers and things that want to help maintain this, and the technology is not too complicated, there's three different tiers of use or utilization, and, you know, some can be just novice at it and still be able to maintain some of these data points.
Thank you.
Very nice, thank you. Are there questions to my right? No? Oh, and I see Counselor Crossley has her hand up. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much, and thank you to Counselor Munson for having the idea of this, and to the surveyor's office for actually doing this. This is great work, and I definitely think that this is a way that, again, this is how the county is working for everybody, as well as being able to highlight social service programs and organizations that are doing that for those that are in the justice system or just in general. I often sometimes think that county is behind with technology with things related to this, and this helps tremendously in getting the word out about this. I did have a couple of questions. So from my understanding, this is live right now, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And so if somebody, I know you had mentioned earlier that you have to, like if somebody submits information, it has to be vetted. My question is, for example, there's a social service program or organization, somebody that sees that their information isn't on here or might not be accurate or up to date. How do they submit that information to you? And then is there a kickback that they get to let them know that their information is up and live and running?
Yeah, that's a great question. I wasn't even considering that about the data being, you know, inaccurate and need to get it updated. What we can do here is actually in this link, the survey that we have here, we can make a, basically a question here saying something along the lines of, is your resource or does your resource need a new phone number or hours incorrect, or do new contact information for this resource? And so that would be the way to have this happen. Once these surveys are completed, we are able to check them on like a weekly basis, on a daily basis. There's a process of creating what's called a web hook, which means you get like an email once these surveys are completed. We're working with T S D right now to make sure that that actually goes to the Monroe County email addresses, but we can do it through like Google Mail as well, our Gmail. So yeah, it's a great point and something we'll add to this.
Okay, yeah, that's awesome. And then the other thing is, because this is such great work, my question is, how can we help you all in spreading the message out that this is readily available for the public?
Sure, I would say sharing the URL. I think Trent's idea of the QR code is great, and we can generate something like that. I think Trent's idea of the QR code is great, and we can generate something like that. I do have a GIS division website that's kind of in the works, and I'd say it's about 99% done. And so this would be linked on that, and that would be the homepage, the landing page for all of the GIS applications we've developed within the surveyor's office. And so that would be another way to kind of get that out. This will be showing up on the Monroe County government homepage under the GIS maps as well, so. And then, yeah, I would say if the media's here, the media can cover this as well.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Oh, yeah, and also there is a share widget here, too. So I'll just click, click that right, here's the share widget. If I get out of it, there's three little arrows, so. And that allows you to share it to social media sites and things like that.
Awesome, okay. Thank you.
Great, thanks so much. Are there any other questions? No? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Yeah, appreciate yours.
Now, are there any other departments who would like to give updates this evening? Either online or here in the room? I see none. So that brings us to council liaison updates. Are there any updates from council members this evening? Counselor Hock?
Yes, I want to share this information with you from Chief Dustin Dillard, because their budget meeting is tomorrow at 6:00. So I thought folks might want to hear about this budget, and I'm just going to repeat it from his email, so hopefully I won't miss anything. But that budget is proposed to be right at 15 million. It's 14,978,000, pretty close to 15. It's a budget increase of 7.69% overall. Now, that doesn't mean that the rate will go up. It may bear well be that the rate might decrease because the huge increase of the assessed value for the area that they cover. But it does include one additional fire marshal and six additional career firefighters. And so that's the majority of the increase. But then, in addition, over the next couple of years, they will be seeing an additional administrative staff position, eight firefighters. They really couldn't add all the firefighters they wanted to this year, because they do have some vacancies. But Chief Dillard wants to make certain that he doesn't have so many to train, that it would not go well for them. So they have, he does not want to have a recruit academy in excess of 10 probationary firefighters. So anyway, this is a budget that many are interested in. I've already received several emails, and so please get in touch with them if you have questions, and they're always happy to assist you with any questions you might have.
Great, thank you. Other updates? Let's start with Counselor Decker.
All right, thank you very much. I just wanted to note appreciation that the election board with the clerk's leadership has selected a vote center study committee to review that option. We've discussed it here in council. This council's not taken action. At the time that we discussed it, we asked, or I asked, I don't want to speak for this council, but I asked as a member that I would love to hear more thoughtfulness on what that would look like for the county, because the Indiana law lets counties make those decisions, and it looks like this study committee will do that. One thing I want to note about that committee is it represents a bipartisan approach to election administration. It also represents that there is a nonpartisan in the independent voters or registered voters who do not affiliate with a political party, are listed on there as appointees, as well as a representative of the League of Woman Voters, and of course, an individual representing those with functional or access needs. And so I appreciate that the election board is looking at that through that study committee to come back with answers and that thoughtful process. Obviously, there's extremely good value to vote center plans. There also can be issues that can cause problems, so I look forward to hearing more from what they've got to do.
Counselor Decker, do you happen to know if they have a timeline laid out?
You know, I do not know that, but I can find out and report back.
Do you know?
Do you know?
They do not have a timeline currently of appointments. Once appointments are made, they're going to start meeting bi-monthly, and they did not want to set a timeline on when the vote center plan would be presented. Instead, they said that the committee would present to the election board their progress at first, I think it's 60 days after their first meeting, and then would continually check in. I think the idea that was expressed at the election board meeting was they didn't want anyone to rush into trying to form a vote center plan, but to try to take a very thoughtful approach to it. And so the document that formed the committee has quite a bit of information that the vote, that the election board would want to see included or considered into the plan, including looking at plans of five other counties that share some similar aspect to Monroe County, like a university or something like that.
Thank you, appreciate that. Counselor Everson?
Yeah, I have three very quick updates that I wanted to present to you all. The first is the Environmental Commission. We, as soon as our next meeting, we will be completely full. It's been a long time since the Environmental Commission has been completely full of members, so thank you. If you're looking to join a commission, please go to the county's website and fill out the commission appointment. That committee has been very busy with the resilience cohort through the Environmental Resilience Institute. That's my second update, is that the Monroe County Board of Commissioners has created a blue ribbon commission to work on climate resilience, and we should be seeing the first meeting of that body coming up very soon. I think you should probably expect Lee Jones to make an announcement to that regard tomorrow during the commissioners' meeting. From there, we will continue to move on. Our McKinney Climate Fellow, Heather Attic, is doing an amazing job. The deliverables have started rolling in, and I'm very excited to share those with council. And then my last update is that JFAC is winding down. We only have three more meetings, so the next meeting will be on the 28th of this month, where we'll be talking about treatment, and Councilmember Wiltz will be leading that. Then on September the 11th, we'll be talking about jail construction operation. I'll be leading that conversation. And the very last meeting will be on September the 18th, where Councilmember Crossley will be leading a discussion of a final adoption of a report of funding recommendations to be sent back to this council. So that body is wrapping up.
Wow, that's crazy.
Yeah, it sure is.
Any other updates? Okay, that was great. Thank you very much, everyone, for that. Let's move then to item seven on our agenda, which is the county fiscal body's annual review of the estimated property tax levy limits and the tax caps, which are called circuit breakers. So the county fiscal body, us, every year must review those numbers, which are the estimated limits and caps, and look at the impact for Monroe County non-binding entities. And I believe Counselor McKim has a few words to say to help us make that review.
Thank you very much. Yeah, this won't take very long. I just have two, really two spreadsheet screens that I want to show you. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. This spreadsheet is in your Dropbox as well, and really, all it does is pull together information that has already been provided on the Department of Local Government Finance website for us to analyze, and was also actually included in your packet for this meeting. So basically, I'm just going to look at two screens. One is the estimated circuit breaker or tax cap impacts, and the other is the, is going to be the estimated max levies. And I don't think you'll see any surprises or anything interesting in either of them. What I've done on this spreadsheet right here is compared the 2024 estimates that were provided by the DLGF with the actuals in 2023. You don't actually see the actuals here. I've got those rows or columns hidden, but you do see the estimated change and the estimated change percent. And one of the things that you'll notice is that almost all of the larger units have an estimated impact of around four, around or actually 4%, which makes me think that they probably just used the maximum levy growth quotient as a proxy. And so I'm not sure that there's actually any real insight to be gained here. The ones, the units that have large, seemingly large percentage impacts are those units that have very tiny real impacts, and so even a few dollars made a huge difference. So, you know, Steinsville, for example, had a very large percentage increase, but still their estimated increase, or estimated tax cap impact is only $150. If we add up all of the impacts countywide, we see an estimate of about $111,000 more than, more than 2023, than the actuals for 2023. Generally, we find that the actuals are less than the estimates. So I think, you know, my conclusion here would be that the impacts for 2024 are going to be no worse than the impacts for 2023. Anybody have any questions or comments about the tax cap impact?
Given that there's not going to be very many impacts, were there any changes in the budget from the state legislature that impacted how we're going to be seeing this either this year or in future years?
With respect to tax caps?
With respect to, yeah, the circuit breakers.
Well, the, no, I mean, the only thing I can, that I can think of is that, remember that, you know, normally we get this maximum levy growth quotient, which is the six-year moving average of non-farm personal income growth. But for the next two years, the state legislature artificially lowered that, that figure to, you know, in the guise of property tax relief to taxpayers, but they artificially lowered that. Had we actually gotten the full maximum levy growth quotient, it would have been 5.1%.
Right.
But because they lowered it for two years to kind of, I mean, you know, the theory is to get over the hump of the dramatic increase in property values and so on.
So maybe that's a more germane question to the next tab you're going to talk about.
Yeah, I mean, they're all, it's pretty much all linked together.
Yeah, yeah.
That maximum levy growth quotient is really the key figure. So, yeah, if we went to the maximum, or the levy changes, what we're going to see is basically all of them, for all of the units of government in Monroe County, represent a 4.0% with the exception of the, let's see, the Ellisville Civil Town and Richland Township, because they had some, some excess levies that were granted for growth. So those are the only increases that are greater than 4.0%. But otherwise, so basically what you're seeing here is no surprises at all. Some minor increases in the Ellisville area because of the growth there. But the, otherwise, all the levy increases are exactly that 4.0%, which is what the statute gave us this year. And just to, just to tell you how that 4.0, how they got that 4.0 out of 5.1%, the statute basically said, you do the normal formula, then you multiply it by 0.8, and then you take the lower of that number and 4.0%. And so ours was the lowest possible. But what that showed is that actually, you know, the growth really would have given us a much stronger property tax. And by the way, this all relates, of course, also to the presentation we received earlier of the 144s and the request for cost of living adjustment. You know, we hear 8.5% cost of living adjustment, and it is definitely very much deserved. But we all need to be aware that what we're seeing is a 4% increase in property tax, not an 8.5% increase in property tax. And the other big piece, the local income tax, is probably even a little bit bleaker than that, although we don't know for sure. The State Budget Agency released the overall countywide lit increase, and it was at 3.64%. Now, you know, we don't know what, yet what we get of that versus the city, so we could get more than 3.64% or less than 3.64%. But overall, the lit coming into the county increased by 3.64%. So those are the kinds of percentages we're talking about in terms of increased revenue.
And I just want to add, add something on to that, is that when you look at the total increase in lit, the city would, gets a much larger portion of the edit piece of it, and that was a lot of the growth there, was the edit, and the city will get a much larger piece of that pie because they tied it to population and not to certified shares. So you can't just look at the overall growth and think we're going to get what some of us think is a fair amount.
So other questions? These, I also have two more tabs that I don't, we don't necessarily need to spend any time talking about, just, but it is summarizing additional information provided by the DLGF. There's one on the estimated maximum rates for the rate-controlled funds, and then the estimated debt service. Again, those are just, change that to 2024. Those are based on data provided by the DLGF. But what we're required to do is review the estimated tax cap impacts and the estimated levies and make any recommendations to the other taxing units that we might want to. And I don't, I mean, based on what I see here, there's, I don't see that there are any recommendations to other units.
The other thing is, when you look at what they, they say our allowable amount is, it gives the total amount for mental disabilities. And, you know, they increase that at the state, allowing us to take it up a lot further than what we do. So I don't know that there's any thought that we're going to do that, because it isn't like if it's going to help you with your mental health budgets, because that's not, it's not allowed to be used for that. So that's one thought. And the other is, and I tried to research this, and I just didn't have time to get to it, was that it showed that growth, and remember, and now I'm talking about the library, and that growth is really tied to their, they're different from everybody else. They tie that growth to their budget and not to the, and then they come back to see what, what the total levy could be. And, you know, there was that error, and so they lost that for this year. Now, it appears from speaking with Councilmember McKim, that the growth, that amount that they're saying they could have, doesn't look like as if, it looks like as if they're starting as though they had not made that mistake.
That is the way it appears on the paperwork.
Right. Now, and that part I don't know, because it would, remember, that goes right back to how much of a budget that they can have. So that was something I questioned on it as well. But I also would like to call everyone's attention to something to start watching for is in, you just Google on there, local budget notices. That's pretty easy, local budget notices. And on that page, you just scroll until you get to Monroe County, and it tells you every taxing unit and when they have entered it. Now, Richland Township has already entered theirs, and that's the reason why I saw that they had, were going for excess levies. And I've talked with some of the board, and they do believe it's from their growth there. But we need to always be watching for that, because we shouldn't be surprised if something strange goes in there, which, you know, because we didn't look. I'd be looking every day. Very interesting. I also checked with DLGF today to see if Jenny had any idea when we're going to get the distribution amount for our income tax. She doesn't have that number as yet, because they, they work it, and then they give it to Jenny to send out to everyone.
I think it's due on the 14th, isn't it? Theoretically, that's when they're supposed to...
Right, but sometimes we are lucky and get a little earlier.
Yeah, true.
Yeah, so I just thought if we... Yeah, so I just thought if we all voted her, she might. You're like a kid at Christmas.
Are we there yet? Are we there yet?
Right.
So any other question? My, my understanding is that we don't actually have to take any votes. Is that correct? That simply the fact that this is in our minutes?
Correct.
Reckons, fulfills our statutory duty?
It does say that the minute, if we're going to do it that way, that the minute should be done, like immediately and sent out.
Okay. We do have another question.
It's not necessarily a question, but more of a statement. And we, we're hearing much more about data and how we collect data and how we analyze that data. And this spreadsheet is fantastic. If you, if you go into this spreadsheet and you unhide the columns, you can go back six or seven years. And so you could really do some really interesting analysis on the changes over time in this. Now, I know this is all based on DLGF data, which is also publicly available, but the analysis here seems pretty invaluable, and I just wanted to thank you for doing this.
I guess I've been doing it since 2016, huh?
Yeah.
I try to hide most of those columns.
Yeah, but that's, that's really great numbers that you can see just at a glance, and you can draw a lot of conclusions, not only from the grand totals at the bottom, but the taxing units throughout. So I don't know how we're going to preserve this, but it'd be good to keep on doing this.
It's in the drop box for you all.
Yeah.
He always preserves it.
It's in the drop box.
Councilmember McKim.
You can, you can do it next year. But thank you.
No, thanks.
All right.
Did you have some? Okay, Ms. Turner King?
For clarity, looking at the statute, it says that after the county fiscal has held the meeting required by this section, which we're currently doing, the county fiscal body may prepare and distribute a written recommendation for the taxing units in the county. If a written recommendation is not prepared, the minutes of the meeting held under this section shall be distributed to, to the county auditor to send to all the taxing units in the county after the minutes have been approved. So the minutes would be typed, approved, and then sent out.
Okay. Are there any more questions first before the discussion? Okay. So I think what we've done previously and what I'd like to do again is just to, if there aren't objections and we're in agreement, to just direct the auditor's office to notify the non-binding taxing units of our review and that we had no changes at this time.
No objection here.
Okay, then I, then I move that we.
I was just saying, rather than waiting for the minutes of the meeting to come back and then we have to approve.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I think if you could just send that out, is this, I mean, do we need a motion and a?
Okay, I, I move that we direct the auditor's office to send to the taxing units that noticed that we have no recommendations on the non-binding.
Second.
We'll need to add to a roll call vote. Is there any discussion? Is there any public comment?
Circuit breaker is an individual with their hand raised on Zoom.
Okay, please unmute.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My comment is, my name is Kim Naseh, and my comment is actually specifically about American Rescue Plan money, and I have something written, so I will just pull that up. So yeah, good evening, my name is Kim Naseh, I am a county resident. I just wanted to give a brief public comment urging the council to use American Rescue Plan money to support organizations that are already in existence around the jail and incarceration. I heard Councilmember Iverson give an update about the JPAC and how there will be.
Ms. Naseh? Can you hear?
Naseh, yes.
If you could hold, could you hold that comment until we get to that item on the agenda?
Yes.
Thank you, I'd really appreciate it. Right now, we just need public comment on what we're voting on, and that keeps everything in the minutes nice and orderly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So is there any other comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, let's have a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. We are now just going to move right on to item eight, and that's with our courts.
Counsel, I move to approve the court's request for a category transfer in Fund 10000225 General Fund Courts from the Personnel category to the Services category for $29,692.88.
Second.
Welcome, Ms. Abraham.
Good evening. Okay, the first one that I'm asking is to transfer some income from the salaries and move it over from my popper attorney line item. The money that I have is extra money in the salaries item due to people leaving at the higher end. A lot of, I had a couple retired at the end last year at the 25 year, and new ones came in at the zero, so obviously I had some extra. But that's what most of them are, are just salary changes with new people employed at a lower level. My popper attorneys, believe it or not, I started with $100,000 already this year, and I am down to $14,000. It's actually in half of the year. I have one bill coming in from a five-day jury trial that we just had for as a popper attorney, which is going to wipe that out and leave me with zero for the rest of the year. So you may still see me get for additional appropriation for the end of the year, but I split this up into two so I can at least get some to start paying those invoices that I have waiting.
Sure. Are there any questions for Ms. Abraham? Yeah, it seems to be a, a growing expense that we, we see you a lot about, but thank you for requesting it in this way and trying to utilize your, your internal funds. That's, that's very helpful. Is there any public comment on this particular item? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. And we have item B now.
Counsel, I move to approve the court's request for a category transfer in Fund 10000225 General Fund Courts from the Personnel category to the Services category for $30,485.79.
Second.
Okay, again, this is for the excess in salaries to move this time to the mental health. As you guys are aware, I'm always having increases in my mental health. I looked this morning, I have, I started the year with $75,000, I am down to $15,000 already in the first seven months with 15 outstanding invoices, and they average about $1,500 per bill, which is $22,500. And I only have $15,000 to pay those, plus more that will be obviously issued before the end of the year. So it's a start to get me going, paying those invoices when they come in.
Okay. Are there any questions from counsel? Counselor Hawke?
Yes, in case someone's listening at home, I would want them to think that this is a budget you have for mental health, for just anything. This is for mental health evaluations that they are ordered to have ready for, for the trial or.
Yes, for criminal court, correct.
Other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, is there a public comment on this item? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next item, number nine, is from our Health Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request to increase the registrar's hours from 35 to 40 hours weekly and to simultaneously amend the 2023 salary ordinance.
Second.
Hello, Dr. Britton.
I'm really in favor of that.
You're in favor of this?
I'm the, the new health officer, I haven't been on the job a long time.
Can you speak slightly in the microphone?
I'm sorry, I, I'm the new health officer, Clark Britton, and I haven't been on the job really a long time. These guys really work hard, and they're providing a heck of a service. And I've done a little bit of review of, of the health departments around the state. Many larger counties have smaller health departments than we have. And, and even some of the smaller health departments have higher-paid employees. And I think it's, it's a no-brainer to, to treat our key people as full-time employees. They do more than full-time work. And, and I, I don't know what else to say. We would do a service to the community and to our public health well-being by appropriately rewarding these people financially. Indiana is the third worst state in the, in the nation for maternal mortality. It's among the worst for fetal, neonatal mortality. There's smoking cessation issues that need to be taken care of. Obesity epidemic is outrageous. We have a family planning clinic that we monitor that no other health department in the state does, Title X funding. So these people work really hard, they put in a lot of hours, and they really deserve to have full-time employment, and in my opinion, deserve a higher paycheck than they're getting.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Kelly, did you want to add to that?
I can speak to any questions that you might have about the request and why we are looking at doing this, if you would like me to do that.
Okay, sure, I'll just ask, are there any counselors who have questions for the Health Department? Yes.
Well, I guess, so first of all, so I understand, are we talking about moving a part-time position to full-time? I, I thought the motion was to move 35 hours to 40 hours.
That is correct. Currently, the registrar is working 35 hours weekly, and all of our registrars, our registrar and our assistant registrars currently flex out throughout the week, and that is to avoid accruing comp time. The reason that you don't see these comp times accruals reflected in the reports that you run is because I'm really just strict about allowing comp time. So currently, they all flex out early, that leaves a short staff throughout the week. But again, that's just a business decision that I have to kind of weigh against our customer demands.
Yes, Counsel Iverson?
In the request, you indicated that there are three FTEs that would be affected by this change, is that correct?
I am currently just requesting the registrar, so the registrar is our supervisor of that division.
Just one.
In a, yes, so just the registrar. In addition, this would allow this employee to come in and consistently do the opening procedures, counting the cash drawer, checking the nights before deposit to make sure that that is accurate, and to do the daily bank deposits. Currently, we, we are rotating the staff that we have, dropping off the bank deposits, which we have actually been recommended by our auditor's office to keep consistency with having the same individual. That registrar also works with our financial manager on balancing all of the receipts coming in and the expenses coming out because we are processing all of the payments for the futures clinic as well as all of our vital records and permits.
Still, for one, one person working an additional 39.25 extra hours, that's, that's quite a bit, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I have a question, just why this position as opposed to, because your entire department is at 35 hours weekly. That was historic change, hasn't been messed with in a long time. So, and I know we've talked, so I'm just, I'm giving you the opportunity to kind of explain why you picked this position in particular.
So I think that this could be a good starting point. In addition, I think that the other administrative employees, that could also be a good start to kind of transition into getting everyone to that 40-hour point. Again, I really have to weigh the employees servicing the Monroe County population and making good business decisions for Monroe County government. So this is a way to start incorporating, shifting this change without just a sudden move in that direction for everyone across the board, to really kind of just ease in the transition, see how things work, and to make sure that we're actually producing the work in each area that requires that 40-hour mark.
Okay. Other questions?
So, so I'm sorry, what are the, what are the hours of, of operation, like, when's it open to, to the public?
8:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Okay. And, and so, and so there are three P, three FTEs that would be staffing that?
So the registrar would work from 7:30 AM to 4:30 PM. Again, she would be doing the opening procedures, and then that would allow for late customers, and then creating that bank deposit, walking it down to the bank, and then being able to leave for the day. But the other employees would be able to instead shift their schedules and flex work that consistent 8 to 4.
Okay.
Counselor Deckard?
I had a, a question to talk me through. You, you talking about the deposit and, and that schedule reminded me a little bit of my grocery store days, and so I have a question for you. If tardy trick comes in at 3:54 and I've got a cash transaction, theoretically, is the registrar making that deposit at, by 4:30 that night? That cash that I've exchanged, does that go to the bank that day?
Yes, so, yes, so we are still servicing that customer, which then extends the work time, so then somebody has to flex out and leave early the next day.
Gotcha, gotcha. Thank you for clarifying that for me.
Counsel Iverson?
Yeah, you know, looking at the fiscal impact on page 84 of the packet, you know, this is a $2,600 fiscal impact at the end of the day, and I, I'm in favor of that. I, I feel like the Health Department could really use the, the support, and I, I think that that's, that includes both FICA and PERF increases. So, yeah, I, I'm in support of this.
Go ahead.
And I'm sorry, what are the, what are the other positions in that office? What's the title of the other positions?
Within the regis, the vital records?
Yes.
They are assistant registrars.
Okay, so then, so this is only the supervisor, but you have two additional FTEs that are called assist, assistant registrar?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Team Lee, I could deal with the airport.
Yeah, true.
Other questions or comments?
Just that I would like to make sure that we don't do the entire department before we're considering the new revenue that will be coming in, having to do with the latest from the state, but I, this makes sense for this one person.
Okay. Questions or comments to my left? Okay. Is there any public comment on this item for the Health Department? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. And then we have item B, also from our Health Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request to increase the health administrator's hours from 35 to 40 hours weekly, retroactive to January 1st, 2023, and to simultaneously amend the 2023 salary ordinance.
Second.
Okay. Do either of you want to talk about this before we start asking questions?
I, I don't want to editorialize too much, but once again, I, I think these guys deserve. I think these guys deserve a higher pay scale than they're getting, the whole department.
Okay. Are there questions, then, from counsel?
Yeah, I guess, I actually don't have a problem with the move from 35 hours to 40 hours. Actually, it's actually kind of shocking that the health administrator is only 35 hours. I do have a, I really have a hard time stomaching the retroactive to January 1, though. So I guess I'd like to hear the justification for that.
Well, it's been approved by the Health Board, the Board of Directors from the Health Department for a long time, and seeking action.
I see. Questions, Council Iverson?
That was my concern as well. Again, I'm looking at the fiscal impact statement, page 87 of our packet, and those two scenarios are pretty clearly printed up there. You know, one of the things, you know, I hear what you're saying about how the Health Board has voted. I don't know. I have to think about this a little bit more here.
I might add, too, that the administrator's been working way in excess of 40 hours a week the entire time that she's been under your employment. So she's been earning that and more, and deserves it.
Yeah, I have the same concerns that I'm hearing from my colleagues, and I have absolutely no doubt you work more than 40 hours a week.
Absolutely.
Not just more than 35. And so I feel like this is fully justifiable in terms of going forward. We don't typically make these adjustments just to increase pay scale. First of all, it is more about reflecting the actual number of hours worked. And I do appreciate you sending us the information on that, the timesheet information. It doesn't, it shouldn't take too terribly long to get an item onto our agenda once it's approved. And I know, I think part of the holdup might be that you're making a lot of, you're considering a lot of changes within the health department, which I know is no small feat. I'm very leery to set a precedent of this retroactive increase in hours or pay, though. I'm curious if there are other thoughts. It looks like you might have something to add.
Thank you. My name is Aurora Diorio. I'm the vice chair of the Monroe County Board of Health. So if you can imagine the entire Board of Health sitting here, I am their representative tonight because I couldn't all be here. I just wanted to make sure that you understood how enthusiastically supportive we are of these changes before you tonight. I know it's a bitter pill to swallow, the retroactive. We have been, I'm sure you've been following along, either, you know, through your communications with Lori or by reading the newspaper. The health department, the Board of Health, has been having some challenges these last 10 months. It's felt a little bit like herding cats. And Lori has been amazing in terms of her motivation and her efficiency. She's a very hard worker. She is bringing things to our attention that we were previously unaware of. And we are really committed to having the best health department in the state. And unfortunately, that takes money that may not be readily available. So we recognize where, this is a big ask. It's hard to say, you know, we have been, for the last several months, hearing that she has been working over hours and over hours, and we have been trying to get this to you, this request to you in a more timely manner so that it didn't have to be retroactive to January because that's a lot of money. But, so I just wanted to say two things. We understand it's a lot of money, it's a big decision, but we really feel it's vital to not only going forward, but to recognize the work that she has put in so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Council Hawk?
Yes. I just wanted to call attention to the fact that the salary, present salary now is $62,026. Take a look at the council budget and see what's... I mean, this is a department head.
I am.
Now, I'm not in favor of taking it back first of the year. Everybody asked for that. We simply can't do that. But I, you know, it's hard to have all the salaries in your head. But $62,000 to be over the health department does not seem inappropriate now.
I don't disagree with you. I had meetings last year with WIS, questioning how they got this number because they did the recommendations just before Ms. Kelly came. And I was told this was based on comparison, you know, just the same way they did all of them, comparison counties. And we were, I think, in agreement to stick with it for as many, you know, as many months as we can, see it through, and try not to mess with the WIS recommendations. But I agree. I was a little taken aback.
I'm just comparing it to what some of the other salaries are here in the county. And I'll be the first to say, and I'm not saying it in order to be detrimental, I'm just saying, I'm putting it out there just because that's the way I feel about it. I've not been happy to see the reports. It's been in the paper, people being upset, feeling like that we've got to turn the page here, all of that. And I wouldn't want anybody to think that that kind of thing is being rewarded. On the other hand, when I'm looking at $62,000 to be over that whole department, I don't think that's right. And so I'll support going to 40 hours. I mean, a lot of our departments are 40 hours.
Oh, yeah.
That is, would be nothing different. And I regret that your board didn't come here earlier, but that's not really our fault. So that's where we are.
Yes, Mr. Decker?
I'll make a couple of comments. First of all, I appreciate both the Health Board being represented here and the health officer. It's good to see you in this meeting, and I appreciate it as well as our health administrator. When I look at it, the 35 to 40s, there's no question on that for me. My concern about going to January 1 is in a situation where we have to do this for more than this individual, and we end up doing this for a lot of individuals. And there's always a good reason to argue for going back to January 1. But our task is coming up with the money from the people of this county for everything that we do. And what I'm hearing up here is a lot of concern about that January 1. And I don't want to impede what needs to happen, and that's that 35 to 40. And so I would entertain that because the Health Board and the council have not addressed this prior, I don't know that we can fix everything tonight in the way that it's on this original motion. But I would move to amend the original motion to take this back to July 1. I know that's not what is being asked, but it is what I think perhaps others might support here and will get us moving on this. And both council and Health Board and Health Department can then in the future stay up on what we need to do to get this corrected. We've gone through a pandemic, and thank God for you all during the pandemic because we'd be in an absolute mess. And I never had heartburns over anything that you all did during the pandemic. But at the same time, on this issue, we have to think about every single department we have and every single need we have in budget, and rationalize how that all works out. And that sometimes means that we're not giving you everything that you want. But I would offer a motion to take this to July 1, to keep the change, and to cement that.
Second.
Are there any comments on that amendment?
Yeah, I do have a question, and maybe this is more for staff than it is maybe for council. But on the fiscal impact sheets, the effective date tied with 7:30, does this change a whole lot if the effective date is 7:01 versus 7:30?
No.
I don't think it's really that big of a deal, right? Okay, sure. All right, that's my question.
Ms. Turner came.
In referencing the fiscal impact, I do think it's fair to comment that the fiscal impact is based on the current classification of the health administrator job description. And both Michelle and I have been working with Lori to update her job description as well as other job descriptions in the health department. So those will come to pack. They will ultimately be submitted to WIS. And if WIS reclassifies the health administrator position based on those changes, it could change the amount of fiscal impact.
Absolutely, yeah. But not retroactively. Great. I think no matter what the classification, you're working more than 40 hours. I shouldn't say that. More than 35. You're working 40 hours. So that's good information to think about from the fiscal side. But I definitely feel like that's still worth it. Any comments on doing a July 1?
I'm not in favor.
Not in favor? Thoughts?
July 30, that's what I looked at, what I discussed with people, and what I still believe is the right thing. And remember, the next person who comes along and says, "Now I want mine changed, and I want to go back a month,"
Well, we've done it before.
What we do, for one, we have a lot of employees. We have to be fair. I do think it's fair to ask for the 40-hour. I mean, I just think it's fair. But I won't support going back to July 1, but if that's what everyone wants to do, well, you don't really need my vote.
I think it's a reasonable compromise.
I, yeah, I like it because I think it shows that we do appreciate the intent, even if we're not comfortable with going back to the beginning of the year. So any public comment on the amendment to change the retroactive date from January 1 to July 1?
Council Munson, has her hand raised?
Hello. I was just going to comment that I thought the fiscal impact was negligible to move it back to July 1, and it seemed a reasonable accommodation to me.
Thank you. All right, public comment?
I'm going to say this again. I am fairly new to this process. I was appointed health officer in April, and at the first meeting I attended, this request had already been approved by the Board of Directors.
Okay.
This is not a new request for us as a board. Now, I realize it's a new request for you as a council. But we've been stymied by a change in leadership in the council or in the Board of Health. We've been challenged by leadership change in a health officer, and we've had a relatively new administrator. So we don't know all the processes, and I don't want to step on toes, but we're not talking a whole lot of money here. And I think, in all fairness, if the board approves it, that there is some compunction on the part of the council to listen to that.
Okay, thank you. I think with seeing no other public comment, we're ready to vote on the amendment. Except our council seems to be thinking of telling us something.
Sorry, I'm processing a thought. I just noticed that Council Blair Munson is not visible, and I think by statute, to participate in a vote, you have to be seen.
I think she's been just turning her camera on to vote.
Yeah, she has been visible before.
Okay. I didn't, I wasn't catching it for the votes.
Thanks. That's good to keep in mind, though. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Council Crossley?
Yes.
Council Wiltz?
Yes.
Council Decker?
Yes.
Council Munson?
Yes.
Council Hawk?
No.
Council McKim?
Yes.
Council Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passes, six to one.
Now, may I ask, that was the motion, just whether or not to take it back to July 1?
Correct.
And now the motion is going to be for?
Now we can...
40 hours, the underlying.
Now we can pursue the vote on the 40 hours. Are there further comments or questions? Yes.
I just wanted to underscore something that was said earlier, that there are many other things in the works that are coming to pack. So we're excited to continue to work with you to right-size the department, to make it work for you and your leadership. So this is certainly not the end of the road or, you know, the last time we'll be talking. So we certainly are happy to work with you to make sure the department is the best it can be.
Thank you. We appreciate your support very much.
Other comments or questions from council? I do want to underscore what Council Iverson just said. I know that you've been in communication, but I encourage you to keep those lines open with our staff and utilize them to get to these meetings. And as we're approaching budget for 2024, which is crazy in and of itself, but you have a lot, you know, you have a whole new revenue source to work with. And I hope that you're looking at that as a boon to kind of the larger efficiencies in your department because I see all of that kind of coming together. If you need assistance, you know, you've got a table of folks here who are experts in that. And, you know, let us know. I just volunteered all of you all to work for the health department part-time, just in case you were wondering. Do we have public comment on the item for final vote? I see none, so we'll do a roll call.
Council Iverson?
Yes.
Council McKim?
Yes.
Council Hawk?
Yes.
Council Munson?
Yes.
Council Decker?
Yes.
Council Wiltz?
Yes.
Council Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passes, unanimous.
Again, thank you for being here on that issue. We now have item C, and take it away.
Counsel, I move to approve the health department's request to add a permanent full-time environmental health specialist for 2024.
Second.
Okay. We have heard about this, but it's been a little bit of time.
Yes. And I do hope that, I had shared a spreadsheet with TSD earlier, so they might be able to share that with you as well about just some of the metrics that we have been gathering within the department for how beneficial this position has really started to be over the past several months. So as you can see here, we have comparison studies dating back over the past few years that shows the increased productivity of our wastewater division, which this position has been a huge part of playing a role in. In addition, I do understand that this position was originally created while someone was on military leave. However, due to the demands within Monroe County and the department has really been able to help us serve many areas in environment... able to help us serve many areas in environmental, cross-training in various sections. We do have a well water program that we need to get reestablished. This position could also help to get that program started back up. In addition, simply for safety reasons, I do like to send all of our field staff out in pairs. So although it seems like we are reducing the numbers of full-time workers that we have producing the work, as you can see by our metrics, we are still actually increasing the work that we are providing in the community.
TSD, could you zoom in just a little bit more, please? My old eyes. Your eyes are quite young. Trent Deckard is flattering me over here. Thank you.
Sorry, I was busy looking. I just let everybody sit. Like, oh, how interesting. Yes, Counsel. Counselor McKim, please go ahead.
I'm just seeing a lot of zeros for septic system repair permits issued. Is that just because you haven't received any requests? Because that's actually one of the, you know, the areas that we get complaints from members of the public, that it just takes forever to get a septic permit.
It's actually been a large area of concern within the department. Some of this has to do with having to sort through the filing system that has been used to see what are accurate, when they were actually placed, what the status is, and then having to try to recheck on those. But it is something that we have been actively working to address and correct, and we recently had a few of our employees go through and clear out some of that system. We also use the OpenGov system to actually determine what we actually have active that we need to address and can address, and have now updated that, and that is one of our areas of focus that we are going to start targeting.
So are we now using OpenGov for septic permits?
We have been. I just don't think that it was being utilized to the full capacity that it has the ability to be used.
Okay. And I know at one point, there was a database that was essentially inaccessible because it was built on old technology that wasn't available anymore. Are all those records at least available now to the department?
We have made huge changes in getting those records now uploaded into a system that we can use. Again, that's been a really large issue within the department is our technology and the record storage system that we have, but it's something that we've been working and that we are resolving. And they've spent months getting all of our records uploaded into a new system that we can actually use.
So every record is at least available now?
That we have had access to.
Wow, other questions? Peter Iverson?
Well done on follow-ups on complaints. That number skyrocketed, 611 to 54. That's quite a jump.
These employees have been working so well, so hard, really coming together over these past few months. I'm just so grateful and so thankful to see the unity that we've built and how much extra assistance that other employees who don't even work in this division have jumped in to help out. It's really amazing. Just last month, we had two of our general employees who helped provide over 50 different services for work orders on top of their own duties.
And it seems like folks are finding it easier to lodge a complaint, too. That number has gone up, which I think is probably a good thing for our community as well, that they're talking to us and we're able to go out and address those, so.
Maybe this was part of what you were speaking of earlier, but I'm just saying, septic system repair permits issued all year, zero, and that just doesn't sound like a good number.
It's for, it's just for the months of June, like, the first table is the month of May.
I thought it meant up through.
No, it's not cumulative, it's comparing. So the first table, the top table, shows May of 2021, 2022, and 2023.
Right, just May.
Just May.
It's not like from January through May.
Correct, correct.
Well, it looks like both May and June. What about July?
Then June is the next table, and it's a completely separate and still not cumulative.
I was looking at it and thinking, well, that's not very much for one half of a year.
Are there any that are in queue? I mean, are there septic repair permits that should be being issued now but aren't, that are waiting on?
It could be waiting on further approval, for example. I could definitely find out that specific information and send it along to you. And I'm not sure what July represents, but it is listed on this table, perhaps, there we go. So, yes. But follow-up complaints are one of the largest areas that we've really been having to tackle. At one point, there were over 800 of those that we were trying to sift and sort through. So, I mean, this has been a really long and grueling process, but we are really making large improvements.
Okay, other questions or comments?
I've got another one.
Mr. Iverson?
So on the lines for real estate inspections, those are either flat or they've decreased. Like, if you look at June, that's really fallen off. Are you receiving less requests for an inspection, or what's, why did that drop off so harshly?
Sure, so it's just based upon the number of requests that we are receiving in. There are other organizations, like private organizations, that also offer the service. For example, I have been told before that at times, members of the population have used a private organization just because they can get the service provided quicker, whereas we are addressing, you know, public health hazards first and foremost, you know, raw sewage out. So we have to kind of put those on the back burner, so we can't always get to those as quickly as a private organization is able to.
So if something's not an identified public health concern, then an inspection is then outsourced to a private company or referred to a private company?
We certainly communicate with the members of the public on other organizations that can provide the service if they need something done in a more timely manner. We have to sort of, I'm going to use the word triage because it's just in my vocabulary, but that's really how we're assessing everything that's coming in.
Interesting. Thank you.
Questions, more comments? Okay, so...
I would just hope that if this happens, my phone will quit ringing from my real estate friends saying, we can't get a permit, would you get those people? You know, put a knot in their tail or something. So I hope this is going to make the, I mean, this is a service.
Absolutely.
And you're looking to add this to 2024?
Permanently, yes.
Yeah, so it's just, it's really not changing the budget, it's maintaining.
Correct.
All right, are there other questions or comments? Last call. I have no ability to see if someone has their hand raised on Zoom right now, so, oh, that was quick, thanks. Okay, members of the public, public comment. All right, I see none, so let's go ahead and do the roll call vote for this one.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, man, for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We now move to item 10, and we'll be doing 10B first.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion the potential adjustments to the lit special purpose fund rate.
Second.
Okay, here we are discussing. It was, go ahead.
I mean, I think both Counselor Hawke and I have been, have been kind of bandying this around for a while, but I think the general concept is that we all know that the lit special purpose, formerly known as the juvenile coet, income tax rate has been generating far more money than is needed by the departments. We have even, you know, encouraged them to think about additional services that they can provide. They have already gone through a reorganization, have added on, added on staff, have augmented their services, and yet we still have, what, what's the operating balance right now of that? But it's around, it's over $4 million, around $5 million, right? Yeah. So the thought is, we could, and yet they're still operating at a surplus, still adding to that balance. What we were thinking is that we could reduce the lit special purpose rate by a small amount. The, it would bring the lit special purpose budget into a small deficit, but I mean, a deficit that could be sustained for a decade on that, on the operating balance, but would then free up tax rate that we could then use to establish a corrections rate. And there have been, there were some changes made to the corrections rate this last General Assembly that essentially allow us to use it for all for operations instead of, it used to be you could only use 20% for operations and the rest for, had to be used for capital projects. And so, actually, why don't I show a spreadsheet that I have here? Okay, everybody see the spreadsheet? So right now, the rate is .095 percentage points, and that brings up, and that essentially results in a small surplus. Now, the one complicating factor is that the corrections rate has to be established in units of 1.01 percentage points. So we couldn't, for example, set the corrections rate to .005 percentage points. Instead, so what I'm proposing is that we reduce the lit special purpose rate to .085%, and then that will free up, I mean, you know, these are all just estimates based on what we know now, around $425,000 that we could then, and we could then establish the corrections rate at .01 percentage points, and that would essentially raise $424,000 that could be used for any kind of corrections and rehabilitation, including existing expenses.
So did you reduce the, this isn't what I thought we were doing, did you reduce the special purpose rate by the .01%?
Yes.
Okay, why did I hear you saying something else?
From .0, from .095 to .085.
Yeah, I just outlined a couple of different scenarios here, and the sweet spot that seems to both leave the lit special purpose with a manageable deficit and is also an allowable rate for corrections, I think seems like it's...
So it's a .01 coming from special purpose and .01 being added into the corrections?
Yes.
And so it's an even, it's not one penny more for the taxpayer.
And actually, here, that's, let me...
It's like 420, is that right under 425,000?
Yeah, just under 425,000.
And the amount that is projected for special purpose was right at 4 million.
Right.
And that, it's just amazing, I can remember, we thought we were rolling in money over there when it was 2 million.
So here is the, this spreadsheet then shows the entire rate structure of our local income tax here, what we currently have, and then what we're proposing here. And so we have the, the one little nuance here is that the corrections tax is under the expenditures rate cap, while the special purpose, the current special purpose lit is not. So we, and that cap is 2.5 percentage points. So the, but we're not that close to it. But remember that the city controls, in the form of the Income Tax Council, controls those other rates, the certified shares, public safety, and economic development. We control, the county council, controls the corrections rate, and plus, there's also a judicial rate that we could throw in there if we wanted.
And we also control the special purpose.
And we also control the special purpose. But what this shows is that we still have plenty of ceiling within the 2.5% cap for the expenditures rate. But we are slightly increasing the expenditures rate, but yet the total lit rate that the taxpayer pays at the end of the day remains the same.
I think that's pretty swift, is what I got to say.
Counsel Iverson?
So just so, I've got this straight in my head, if we leave funds, if we leave the rate the same at lit special purpose, the allowable uses are not as great as those if we were to free those funds up?
Correct, we've essentially run out of...
Allowable uses where it's at now.
Yeah.
And so what I heard you say is, is if we move it, if we reduce that rate and we free up those, I guess we're going to free up the cash, that seems a little crass, but that's what we're doing, that then that can only be used for operational purposes, not capital purposes, is that correct as well?
It could be used for capital as well. I'm saying it doesn't have to be used for capital.
Okay.
It could be used for operations, and that includes existing jail and corrections expenses. I mean, that's literally, we can put existing corrections officers in there, we could fund other things needed associated with the new jail.
It just says operations and maintenance.
Sure.
That's the way the legislation works, but I hope that we will all remember that at the end of last year, when the jailers came here and said, look, you know, while you're talking about maybe a kind of a bonus or whatever, that isn't going to help them fill those slots. They had a lot of vacancies, and they needed a higher salary in order to generate new, you know, new employees for the jail. And, you know, you do enough research and you figure out, if they all walk out, Indiana State Police is going to be running our, we have to do the right thing for that. So, but we also knew it was not sustainable if we didn't change the dollars around, and my thought at the time was, we can grow into it, we had enough cash that we could grow into it over like a three-year time and catch up, we just weren't going to be able to grow other budgets. But this would help us meet that obligation that we have in place, cover those salaries, and then free up the dollars then in general, that we could also cover those law enforcement salaries that were increased. Then in dollars left over, we would have extra money. My thought was to increase that contract with medical services for the jail to cover more mental health services there.
Sure.
So anyway, you go at it, and remember that the dollars coming into the special purpose cannot be used for the things that we need over here.
That's the conversation we just had, yeah.
Right, so...
Can I ask?
100% of this corrections rate can now be utilized for operations and maintenance.
At the rate we're allowed to adopt it at?
Up to, like, we're allowed to take that to .02, but if we take, which we don't want to take .02 from the special purpose, but if we take the .01, it's going to be like 425,000 or something, and that's going to make a big difference in what we can do in corrections. I mean, it's not going to be monumental, but it is for now.
And I just want to confirm from our council that you also agree that at this rate, we'd be allowed to use it for operations and maintenance?
I was just looking at the statute, and I think when you're referring to the correctional tax, you're referring to...
Could I interrupt you just a minute? Would you reduce that screen so I can read what you're saying?
I'm sorry, yeah, let me stop, stop it.
Thank you.
So I think you're referencing the tax rate for correctional facilities provided by IC Code 63.662.7, and what it says is, not more than amount equal to the amount of revenue... And what it says is, not more than amount equal to the amount of revenue that is attributable to two tenths of 1% of a tax rate imposed under this section may be used for operating expenses for correctional facilities or rehabilitation facilities in the county. So I think the full amount, as long as it's under the .2, could be used for operationals. It doesn't specifically reference maintenance, but I think one can make the argument that maintenance is an operational cost.
But it's all sort of, I mean, if it's operations, you can always move salaries in there and, you know.
Operations and salaries.
Yeah, right, that's what I'm saying. You can always move salaries, which then frees up for.
And whatever we're doing, that the language is there and not here, can we fix that?
T S D, could you turn the captions on on this monitor?
Because I was really enjoying.
I know, you like that.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
I also appreciate the fact that you've been moving it so we can see. I really do appreciate that, but this is perfect. Okay, Counsel Irvinson.
Okay, so hearing you talk, Counselor Hawke, it made me think that there are those cases that we could use this for, but there's also additional cases that we have not yet begun to consider that will come up. And what I mean by that is, if we were to somehow select a site for the jail magically this month, or even next month, we would not be done with construction and moving inmates to the new facility until sometime in 2028. There will be a lot of costs from now till then, and that doesn't include a treatment facility. And once you start thinking about treatment facility, that's even more additional costs. So freeing up funds to be able to handle unknown expenses, I think is fairly wise.
No, you go ahead. You were going to say something.
Well, I just, I, I mean, I like the sound of it. I, my question slash concern would be if we, I have a couple of things, but the first one is, if we were to establish this corrections tax at this rate, does that lock us into that rate for ever, or not forever, but I mean, for the rest of the year? Could we go, come back after we look at budgets and say, hey, we'd rather have that at .2? No, .0?
So this is a question that I posed to DLGF today, and unfortunately, Mr. Vander Dorp and I have just been playing phone tag. I'm not, I specifically asked Mr. Vander Dorp, there's a statute that says the local income tax council can only take one action within a tax year. And I asked him if the same is applicable to a county council. So since this is a tax decision totally within the purview of the county council, are you allowed to take one action, more than one action? And I just haven't been able to speak with him since I posed the question this morning.
Does that mean that we would do one action that would be lowering the one rate and establishing the new rate? Is that?
I think that would be one action together. I just want DLGF confirmation that I didn't make that up in my head.
And then that would also apply to my question, if we could do something.
The conversation that I started with Mr. Vander Dorp was, if the local income tax council acts, does it preclude the county council from acting within the same year? And he advised that it's the position of DLGF that that is not the case. So we're not, if the local income tax acts, we can still do something. I just don't know if we can do two actions in one year. So if we impose a tax now and then after budgets think it should be higher, if we can adjust it within the same calendar year.
Got it.
What I suggest, yes. We could take it to .01 now, if at sometime in the future after this year, not this year, after this year, the group would decide to raise it, but you can't take it up any higher.
I can't hear, Mom.
Yeah, talk into the mic. I hear you, but they don't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I can't hear you.
Okay. If we take it to .01 this year, and then that, and if we get this moving quick enough, then that changes it in October. If we don't get it moving quick enough, then it would change it not until January to start bringing in the revenue. We need to move forward so that we know we've got it to budget when we're working with all of our budgets, right? So, and there was something else I thought I heard you saying, .02, I understand you're going, oh, well, you want more, but it's not going to be like that great big, you know, percent that we thought we might get in a larger bond issue or something of a sort. So this, this legislation really, it appears this year, they made it just so that we could, people who needed it for operations and maintenance, that we would have that available to us. And we could keep it, you know, tax neutral. Right now, I don't, I'm not in favor of putting a new tax on people, just, they've had it.
Okay, yes.
And I guess I, at this point, I would agree with Counselor Hawke. I am probably more open to a net tax increase in the future. If we actually have concrete plans for treatment facility or something that, that demands the revenue, I'm certainly willing to support a tax increase to support that. I think right now, when we're talking about just basically keeping our heads above water, I think this is kind of an easy way to gain access to some additional funds that the taxpayers are already paying, but are just sitting in a bank account, basically.
Yes. I did have two bits of information that I wanted to share. And the first was that I did have the opportunity to speak with the presiding judge today who was aware of this proposal. And what the presiding judge had indicated was that she had, I believe Mr. Hatfield, run numbers, and that based on those numbers, there was an adequate funding for the near future. And so that's the first bit of information. And then the second bit of information is, I wanted to just remind you of the timeline for passage. So if you were to change, make this change, an ordinance adopted after August 31st but before November 1st would be when the timeframe you would be looking at to make it effective January 1st.
But there's some kind of notification we have to do, there's a process, right?
There is a process. So we'd have to have a 10-day notice to do a public hearing. I don't have the exact statute in front of me, but I wouldn't be surprised if it has the notice specifically to the taxing units. But the first bit would be the 10-day notice, which we haven't published yet.
Right, so we are looking at something for January revenue. Got it.
The money comes in in January, but we have to do it before November 1st, right? That's the way you understand it?
Yes, yes, but we don't have to do it by the end of this month.
I thought it was like before, what is the final date that we could get it started with revenue would be changed in the 1st of October.
So if you adopt it after December 1st of the preceding year and before September 1st of the current year, then it would go affect October 1st. So if your goal is to do October 1st, then your deadline's September 1st. If you want it to be January 1st of next year, then it would be between, after August 31st and before November 1st.
Got it.
So October.
So theoretically, it's possible to do it effective October 1st?
Yes.
It is theoretically possible to do it effective October 31st if you have it done before September 1st.
So we would, did you say we needed two readings?
Yes, I can double check the statute. I don't know, I don't think there's two readings. I will check now.
Okay, and in the meantime, Counsel Irvinson.
So for some context, as soon as we know a site on which we'd be building a facility, we would know square footage, and we would have a much better idea of a, of more concrete costs that we could be aware of, the use cases is what I'm talking about. And so that seems to fit within this, it seems to me that it could fit with, well within this timeline, potentially.
Yeah, that's, that's, if we didn't even build another jail, this is money to operate where we are right now, and I suggest that we move forward quick, quick. If it takes two readings, we could have a special meeting to bring in nearly half million dollars to help us out with operations. That's why I was trying to push before, I know it sounds pushy, but I was trying to push, let's do it, let's do it. And I just think we ought, too bad we didn't have it ready to read for the first time right now, tonight.
There are, there are costs coming.
Yeah, it would have, it would have taken.
Yeah, you'd have taken.
10 days.
Notification and all of that, but I don't know whether timeframe, if we can even get this done before the deadline, so that we could change this over in October.
I think that, that we'll check on that. I'd also like to know about the being able to do something again, and I just don't want to, even if it has nothing to do with the corrections tax, I want to make sure that we know what we're doing when we vote, like.
Right, it's just I don't think you could change it. I don't think you could change it. It's, vote on it as oh, .01 now and like sometime in December, say, well, no, we want .02. I don't think that would be allowed, but then for the following year, then you'd start out with the new dates. Now, I'm not, you know, the person who wrote this legislation.
I get it, yep.
But I would say that, I mean, there's nothing that stops you from going to the .02.
Right.
As long as the timeframe was, this might have only been legislation for like one of those short periods of time. Like some of that legislation was like only for three years or something. We need to research that.
I was just going to make the comment, first of all, I appreciate the detailed information so far that we received and sort of the illustration tonight. I have to be very candid, that was the most, the clearest that I've heard this talked about since it's, I've heard a little bit of scuttle around the courthouse. And I think, before I move on anything, I have to, those are the things I have to see. If it's everything that folks say, I can see some strong arguments for this, and certainly that case has been made. One caution I would just say, and this is what gives Ms. Turner King her homework and headaches, is making sure that we have in writing from the state, the process and what we can and cannot do. Because while, as Counselor Hawke talks a lot about the legislation that changes, the state wears the power in that, and they're able to change their rules or interpret their rules a lot of times, we cannot be wrong on something where revenue is coming in, particularly if it's dependent. So we won't, we don't want to jeopardize the existing funds Judge Decop is referencing. We also don't want to get this process wrong and put us in the hurdle. So I kind of appreciate this effort, but I want to make sure that we follow that lawfully to get that done if we were to move forward.
I agree. Counsel Munson?
Thank you. Thank you. I wanted to say that I appreciate having Judge Decop's comments. I think that gives us an important foundation. And I paid special attention to what our attorney, Ms. Turner King, has said. I do believe it is prudent for us to wait until we have word from Mr. Van Dorff as to what sort of timelines and requirements are to be placed on us, because we don't want to have our hands tied in the future, and we want to make the best decision possible. But I do think, I do think it is a wise move to, to invest the special purpose funds where we need funding, and that is with the correctional department.
I do not agree that we should wait until we have all the, all the answers and then meet again and then, because then we'll have given up the opportunity to have this effective in the end of October. I think that it seems like we can still, you know, that's another $100,000 or more. So I think we ought to at least come, you know, come to a consensus and principle of what we want to do and go forth, and certainly Ms. Turner King can get the answers to these questions. But I think the questions we have are what, are about what we might want to do beyond what we want to do. I mean, we want to do something. I think we all agree we want to do something. And then the question is, when can we do the thing beyond what we, what we know we want to do?
During budget hearings. If we get this in here in time, we get the revenue coming in, we know we can count on it.
Well, we'll know we can count on it for January if we get it done. I mean, it'll be, we can count on it for budgeting, it's just that extra $100,000-ish.
Right.
It would be lovely to have, to have, you know, wiggle room left.
And plus which, we've got a lot going on heading toward the end of the year. We need to get this over and move forward. There is no reason to wait.
Counsel Munson?
So, so I'm not understanding the rush to wait for Mr. Van Dorff's answer to the very specific question that were posed. And I thought that we might be getting the answer later this week, and we could be dealing with this at our next meeting, and that would give us plenty of time. I do agree, I do agree that we have imminent expenses.
Well, we would have.
That's all she said.
I mean, but we still need that 10-day notice, right? So if, if we agreed in principle on what we wanted to do.
Yes.
Then we could get the notice out.
We can agree in principle and pending information, you know, have it on our agenda. Is that?
I, I think that sounds very good.
I anticipate talking to Mr. Van Dorf tomorrow. We, I emailed him, he apologized for getting back to me late, and then we have been playing phone tag all day. I do, looking at the statute, think there's a 10-day notice. I think we could go ahead and publish the notice, and then based on whatever information Mr. Van Dorf is able to provide me, we'll determine if you take action on the 28th, but I think doing the notice preserves you the option to take action.
Right, thank you.
Well, neither way, pardon me, Madam Chair, I was just going to say, either way, this council is voting on the sentiment of what kind of has been expressed on that 10-day notice anyway, right? So that's, to me, that would make sense.
It does. I still have a question from the start of the conversation that I haven't asked, and that is, when you started talking, you referred to two different possible taxes, one being a judicial, and we immediately just started talking about the corrections, and I'm curious as to the reason.
There is a new, a new option for, you look like you have something.
To begin with, we were talking about, well, maybe if we put that in place, and then we could switch out part of the money for edit, but, and commit all of it to go to the bond and be able to pull part of that out and so forth, so we were trying like that. Then I said, well, what about this legislation that says we can use one-half of the cost of the courts? But you can't, you'd always have to figure out what is one-half of the cost of the operations of the court, whatever that dollar amount is. Then when I saw this new legislation that said we could use the total amount, you have to use at least .01, but no more than .02, and you could use it all for operations and maintenance, I thought, well, that is a simpler, clearer, smoother way to go forward. And that's what the legislation says. So, and timeframes about when to do it is all already covered in, you know, everything having to do when we have to do it and so forth. So I, I just, this is no brainer.
So I agree that the, I think the corrections tax is more flexible than the judicial, because yeah, we don't have to worry about what's half and, you know, whether you've got more than half in the judicial fund versus in the general fund. The, we know we have far more than $425,000 worth of corrections-related expenses.
Absolutely.
Even if we added nothing, we know we've got that. Now, on the numbers, though, I thought it was .2, not .02.
It's .02, and this corrections tax, it's .01 to .02 you can use for operations and maintenance in this.
Read it. Do you have it in front of you?
I do. So the judicial tax is in Code 63.662.9, and it allows a county to adopt an ordinance to impose a tax rate for county staff expenses of the state judicial system within the county. The tax rate must be in increments of 1/100 of 1%, so 0.01, and may not exceed 2/10 of 1%, so 0.2%. The tax rate may not be in effect for more than 25 years, which is also the same implication or restriction for correctional. So the timeline for how long the tax can remain in place is the same between judicial and the correctional. And then it says, "The local income tax revenue budgeted and spent under this section, being the judicial tax, by each county may not comprise more than 50% of the county's total budgeted operational staffing expenses related to the judicial system."
Operational staffing. Okay. Both of them had, both of them had a floor of 0.01.
Right. But a cap of 0.2, not 0.02.
But the point, but the one for corrections? She was reading something else. I thought the question was about corrections.
It was. That was.
And I believe what you're going to see is it says that the special kind of tax, that if we already had it in place, we could take it after 0.03, but if we didn't already.
0.3, not 0.03.
But look at it. She just read it.
So, no, she read.
Whatever, anyway.
Just for clarification, Ms. Turner King, I'm looking at the statute as well, and what you just read was it may not exceed 2/10, parentheses, 0.02%. Am I reading that correctly?
May not exceed 2, I'm going to share my screen so everyone can see this.
2/10, 0.02, right?
No.
That's what I was reading. Can you zoom in, please?
I mean, the way it read.
0.2%.
But, but it's a percent of that, so you could start at 0.01.
No, because if, because if it were that, if your numbers were right, then that wouldn't be any better than having to spend 80% on, on capital. But the whole point of that legislation was to basically give us flexibility to spend it on, on operations. I mean, regardless, it, we know in the numbers we're talking about here, that we can spend it on operations. But I think it's 0.2, not 0.02. The legislation is not well-written. It is confusingly written.
I would agree with that.
I'm sorry, it is. It took me a long, it took me a conversation with David Bodorf to make sure. I'm confident that, in my interpretation, but.
All right. So you think it's 0.01 that we're going to do, and we could take it to 0.2?
0.2.
Or no, you think?
0.2, we could.
Oh, 0.2!
0.2.
We could take it to millions.
Really? I think that's a different.
And what I'm displaying is the judicial.
Right.
For clarity.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not even proposing using the judicial lit. I think it's less flexible than the corrections.
Than the correctional.
And that was my question, is the logic behind that. Um, okay. So I would entertain the same type of vote that we did a few weeks ago with extension to just indicate an interest in doing this process.
I would like to move that we direct staff to move forward with all necessary means to advertise that we are going to hold this at the earliest possible time for the first reading, to make sure that you are following exactly the directions by the state, and that's nothing new. You don't have to call down, find out, it's in writing. Who all we have to notify, what kind of timeframe. It does take two readings. It doesn't say, it just, you can't do both readings the same date and just move forward and follow the legislation.
That's a long motion.
That's a very long motion.
Now, that was a long motion. I was trying to give directions in my motion.
Anybody?
You want me to make it shorter?
I second the short version of that motion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just get going, girls. Just get going.
Okay. Conversation on that, I think we've conversed. Our staff look a little concerned. Do they misunderstand? Are we okay?
Yes. We're just planning on how to get ahold of DLGF.
Okay.
And getting it done.
Okay.
Before we read, could I ask for the motion to be read? I'm a little confused. Do you have it?
The way I interpreted it.
Well, go ahead. Do you want me to draw this, or do you want me to make a short, concise motion?
What does Ms. Moser have?
I have a motion to direct staff to move forward with all necessary means to advertise holding the first reading of this at the earliest possible time, ensuring we are following all directions by the state.
Yes, and be sure you include the 0.01 and not the words of getting the right.
Yes, a reduction of 0.01% in lit special purpose and an establishment of a rate of 0.01 in corrections.
I will add that in. Thank you.
Okay. I think we've discussed. Is there any public comment on this? And we do have that. Jim Shelton from the chamber.
And as a reminder, if we want to put together a sample of what we think it should, how we think it should read, we can send that to DLGF, and they can preview it. We're not required to do that, but they can do that if you choose.
Okay. First, we'll hear from Mr. Shelton online, and then we'll go to you in the, in the room.
Good evening again. Jim Shelton speaking over half of the chamber. I can't address all the complications, but the chamber supports the transfer of the money from an area where we're not using it into an area which will help deal with the expenses that we've got now and are going to be incurring as we go forward in the corrections area. And we trust you guys and your staff to dot all the i's and cross the t's, but we certainly support that effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. He could get a gig writing our motions. Further public comment? Welcome. Come on up. Just be sure to sign your name as well as.
Hi, my name is Lee Grunthefer. I'm a resident of Monroe County. I've been looking at the lit recently because of this corrections lit, the way that it brings the money just to the county and kind of cuts out the city and the other taxing units. Is that, is that not correct? And one of the things, I have this special lit here, you know, it says that this was developed, I'm not sure when, you know, it talks about maintaining low property taxes is essential to economic development, and the use of a tax like this under this section is needed to count, for the carry, the county to carry out the purpose of this section. And this section is to provide juvenile detention center or facilities providing juvenile services. So what you've been telling us is that you haven't been using the money that we've been paying for juvenile services in this county. You know, the property taxes are set to rise, what, 4%? And there is a use of the local income tax for property tax relief that could, it could be used for that instead, or some other very necessary services in our county that keep us from caging people. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Yes, when this legislation was first put together, there was a consideration by many, I wasn't one of them, who wanted revenue to come in to build a juvenile detention center. Many people wanted, and several did not want it. But when we determined we weren't going to do that, it appeared that we could use that money for our youth shelter, which we already had. And so that's how, that's how we did it to begin with. We took the money, we were paying for the youth shelter, we were paying for it out of the general fund. And so when we put this tax in place, it freed up the money in the general fund for other things, but it provided money to run the youth shelter. Now, over time, we raised those dollars, but then we said the last time we raised it, if that ends up being too much, Judge Galvin said, well, you can always reduce it. And this is just because it ended up being more than what was a reasonable amount for them to use. But, but as a reminder, that does not take away their, our authority, because it's up to the county council, because it's a county council decision, to take that up to the 0.25, which is allowed for this tax to begin with. So you can reduce it, or you can raise it, and if we reduce it and take it and use it over here for the other tax, it doesn't mean at some point in time, if there's a real need to raise it, if somebody wants to build a juvenile detention center, I don't want to, but some people might, you could raise it again over there. Go ahead.
Well, and I just want to follow up on that. I think also the, the results have demonstrated that this money has been extremely effective in reducing, almost eliminating the need for juvenile detention in Monroe County. I mean, you're right, the idea of building this juvenile detention center, when we got the plans for that, it was a 75-bed juvenile detention center.
And they could lock up everyone.
And generally, now we have a handful, no more than maybe two, three, four youth in detention at any one time, that the programs have been successful. This has been money extremely well-spent.
Right. And to just, so that we'll understand how the money flows, you would think you could use whatever is budgeted for detention, you could take it out of this other budget. You cannot, because the way the legislation was written, if your, the detention was being paid for out of county general, that, like 200, 300,000 or whatever for six, seven kids on average, you couldn't take this money and use that, because you could only use it if, if it were for something else, if it was our own detention facility, but it was not for capital, it was just for operations.
I think that's helpful. Thank you. I believe we've had public comment. Did you have anything else to say?
I'm ready to vote.
Okay, I think we are ready to vote. Could we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. We now are at what was item 10A.
Counsel, I move to open for review the council office budget for 2024.
Second.
Great. So as with all departments, we have to propose a budget, and we thought we would take this opportunity to look at a 2024 budget. Do you have that printed, like the spreadsheet by any chance?
I don't have it printed, but I can pull it up.
That's what I meant.
Okay.
Printed on the screen. Oh, dear. You know, in print, right here.
Sorry, my door hatched.
Is that who that was?
That's hilarious. Okay, so here is the proposed, okay, I had to orient myself, sorry. The first column there is the, what we were proposing as a request for 2024, and you can see some notes in that second main column, and then just after that is what that's budgeted at for 2023 in terms of what we adopted, if there have been adjustments, and the total. So going through, we have our council administrator, the person in that position is getting to the eight-year mark, so there'll be an automatic bump that comes with that. So that's what's reflected there in the first line. We are budgeting for a, an assistant council administrator, and that is currently at WIS being reviewed, as all of you probably know. So that's an estimate for what we think it would probably be classified as. And then we've kept our salaries in there, static.
Good.
And that's, oh yeah, that's the longevity is at 800. And then we have a part-time line that has been used for two positions this year. We had our part-time administrative assistant, and we've also had our part-time employee who types the verbatim minutes. That is reduced to only include the verbatim minutes in this particular document. I think we should have a discussion about that line. But moving on down, just to complete the whole list, you can see that then we just are left with the FICA insurance and PERF items. That's the salaries and employee parts. There are other parts of our budget there that you can see fairly minimal, and if you look at what we've been budgeting for office supplies and printing, we're coming in, well, we're about halfway through and about halfway through that. So that seems about right, just keeping those things the same. There's a slight bump in contractual by $10,000 based on what we anticipate for the current people we contract with, FSG and WIS. As you can see, there are the rest of the items. Training and travel increased because we are anticipating adding the full-time position, which is basically eliminating a part-time person, adding a full-time person, so they would be able to do some training. And the, then we have some office expenses, which actually I'm not entirely sure what office expenses would be now that I'm looking at it. So we can find out about that. Community services is the Sophia Travis Grants, and that was increased by 4%. And we have a tiny postage budget, which we apparently aren't using. And. And, um, we do have legal notices for our grants. And, in here is the BEDC membership and the reflection of the MOU that we have. Are there questions about the budget? Yes?
Well, I think, I think you probably know, already know that I support reducing the part-time hourly budget. I think we've, we've created essentially a new full-time position in the council office, which reduced it some, but I just, I think the remaining expenses, the verbatim transcripts are just not useful, very useful anymore. How, how cut up are the verbatim minutes at this point?
From what I've been told, we are at about 2020.
Okay, we're at 2020. So obviously, these are not needed very urgently. I think that the, the use of Zoom, with the ability to search the transcript and then go immediately to the, the video to watch the, watch the proceedings is much more useful in terms of actually gaining information about, for, for research purposes about what happened in a council meeting. So I think that's something that we just need to be responsible and set that part-time to zero and move forward with the, the two full-time staff in the department. And I think that's enough.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes, let me just say that this is highly unusual, to put in the budget, something that we've not had, we don't have the information back yet from WIS. The job description is very different from most any that you would find in any county. So, exactly what that classification is going to end up being, I don't know. But there are very few departments that we would like for them just throw in whatever they wanted in their budget without taking it forward to PAC. And so I think it is time for the council to discontinue acting as though, do as I say and not as I do. So, now I am looking forward to when we hear the information back from WIS and see where we go with that. But I've asked, and I've been told we don't have that back yet. So, I don't see how, you know, if you wanted to think, well, this might be something that you would hold back, that you could throw in later in a budget, but, but to approve the budget the way it is. And the other thing I would like to suggest that we take a look at, not having to do with one position, but just for us to remind ourselves, that, that top dollar amount, does that say, I was going by memory, it's like $67,000 or something, after just hearing that our department head in the health administration was at 62,000. I mean, no wonder people are upset, they ought to be.
Yeah, I mean, and the big problem there is the way we do longevity and, and, you know, I mean, we have-
Or step increases.
Step increases, yeah, two forms of longevity, but yes. I mean, we have a brand-new year-one administrator and someone who's been with the county for eight years, and that's reflected in, in that salary. To address your point about the do-as-I-say, not-as-I-do, other departments are not as restricted in their ability to have this conversation. I am merely just communicating with you what I'm anticipating bringing forward for the budgets. And by that time, I anticipate that we will have heard back from WIS. We have taken this to PAC, it's in its formal process. And I feel like we're following our own guidelines with this position. I don't know exactly what it will come back. I will certainly make adjustments to this budget based on what we hear from them.
Right, except that the rule is that all the other departments were told to have them turned in by, what was it, the third? What, all of the departments were supposed to have their budgets turned into the auditor's office. The deadline for that is, what date was it?
Did we have ours turned in?
And so, and so, and there's that. And there's also what I wanted to see, and so this isn't anything new, that I wanted to see a fiscal impact. And that doesn't mean just what the difference is and what the county council's budget is, but what the auditor's budget will be, because we took away the duties that was really the auditor's duties, and now it's going to be the auditor's office is going to have to cover that. When I've spoken with the auditor in the past, she said that she really needed to take a look at what the job descriptions and how all that was going to work out before she could give us a final answer. But that we should not, it appeared to me, what she was saying, we should not assume that there would not be additional hours needed to be covered by the auditor's office. That's not going to happen for free. So, that's the fiscal impact we're speaking of.
So, the auditor has assured me that these changes are not impacting her budget and will not be requiring her to budget for more hours for her folks.
And she told me that she conveyed that to say temporarily. She didn't mean on a permanent basis. So, that's the reason why the auditor herself needs to be here to answer-
Well, she's enjoying a well-earned vacation, so she can't be here right now. And we had this discussion in the PAC meeting as well. I mean, I feel like I've addressed as well as I possibly can without seeing what the numbers are, what the potential impact of this position is. And by reducing the part-time line by, by one position, that, that, you know, helps balance it. I think that Counselor McKim's suggestion of reducing the part-time to zero for our office will make an even more positive impact on, on what we're looking at right now.
Well, when, and, and I appreciate the auditor deserves a vacation, we all do. I haven't had one, but everybody should have one. But I would just say that she indicated to me that it would have been misunderstanding what she said if she thought it was like anything other than she would deal with this on a temporary basis to just get us past when, when we had a vacancy and so forth. So, but I think, now that I've said my piece, I will happily let you folks vote on whatever you want.
Well, her, her office is the one with the vacancy. You know? So, I, I mean, I don't, I don't know. I don't understand what the concern is. Counselor Iverson?
Yes, if I could change the topic of conversation?
Sure.
You know, I, we are in the middle of our Sophia Travis considerations, and the two members of the Sophia Travis committee are on Zoom right now. And I just wanted to give some context of what we're seeing. You know, right now, we've budgeted $160,830. We received requests of $292,427.36. That's a lot of need that was requested. I know this happens every year, but I wanted to quantify that. And then, just one more data point for us all. Jack Hopkins for this year was $318,795. So, I, I do think that we have some work to do to meet the need that is out there in our limited capacity. Cheryl Munson, how did I do?
I think you did a great job, Peter. Thank you for bringing this up. If you hadn't done it, I would have jumped in. But I'm very glad you did. And, in, in past years, we have raised the amount of funding for Sophia Travis granting more than the growth quotient. And what we're looking at right here is essentially the state-set growth quotient. And what the state does, and the state legislature does, doesn't always fit with Monroe County and Monroe County's need. So, I think we need to continue to grow the Sophia Travis grant funding, especially as, due to our continuing population increase. And I would like to recommend that we at least double it. Double the 4% to 8%. So that's just, that's just a recommendation for me to toss out to you all to consider.
Okay. Yeah. Other, other thoughts on Sophia Travis?
I'm certainly in favor of that. And just for reference, we had $300,000 of requests. And of those requests, 33.3%, a total of 1/3, was seeking to ameliorate food insecurity in our community. So, there's, there's a lot of good work to be done. And certainly, we can't solve food insecurity from this bench, but we can make a dent, and I think that's important.
Other thoughts on Sophia Travis, or other items, yeah?
I can comment on Sophia Travis in saying that every time we've increased it, the increase has been met. And so, I, I tend to follow Counselor Munson's thoughts on that, since she is, has really graciously spearheaded it and knows the ins and outs of that program. And again, I'm not on that committee, but when I was to serve on it, is a privilege and much easier due to her leadership and the way that she does that in a very formulaic way. The one comment I was going to make, and I regret Counselor Hawke is not here to hear it, is the following. I have been on this council since 2019. I've read news about this council and the rest of the courthouse, at least 20, 30, 40 years, I would say. I don't know, I'm 45, so you all figure out whenever that started. But what I would say is, I think in our auditor's office and in our council office, we have one of the most professional arrangements we've ever had with personnel doing remarkable, tremendous things. They're also doing those things because government and service has become harder. A good example is the administration of ARPA funds. The auditor's office has had to figure out all sorts of new things, much like programs before. But we brought in Baker Tilly for that expense. We didn't blink at that expense, we did that. The council office also has risen to that challenge as well. We know, and I've said this before, but I'm going to say it until I'm no longer on this council. This council continues to ask for more, ask to do more, and we continue to do that at later hours in the year. And I take us back to the retention discussion we very pertly had last year, in which we needed everybody listed on that proposed budget and then some. And so, one thing is, the council cannot do its business in secret, Madam Chair, I think this is you bringing here, so we can talk about it, including what Counselor Munson has proposed. But if anyone wants to go back through archives of the Herald Times, I don't know if they're here tonight, but they've got archives, and you can buy some too. But you look through those archives, relations between auditor and council and history. We have one of the finest iterations we've ever had. And I'm all for maintaining that and growing it. Ms. Gregory, the, the folks you see listed on that proposal, we need to continue down that path. We cannot go back, cannot go back, cannot go back. That, this is a good iteration, as counselors need more, ask more, want more, demand more for serving this county.
Thank you. Well said.
Councilmember Crossley had her hand raised. Oh, she, she did, sorry.
Ms. Crossley?
No, I did, sorry, for some, I, I don't know if it was because it was up so long, it just went away. But I just wanted to go back to the Sophia Travis grant, our funding, and I definitely agree that we definitely, I would love to see us double it, because as both Counselors Munson and Iverson said, we have a huge need. And a lot of those folks that came to us a couple of weeks ago to discuss their plans, some of them have gone to the Jack Hopkins Social Service Program. They're coming to us, and it's still not enough. And the biggest takeaway that I got from everybody saying what they needed is because of inflation with food costs, and there is just so, COVID hit so hard. People are still trying to come from underneath the rug from a lot of different things. And so, I definitely would love, as an advocate for community organizations and social services, I, I just think that we can do a lot more with trying to help, and I would love to see what Counselor Munson proposed come to fruition.
Thanks, Counselor Crossley. So I see a suggestion for increasing Sophia Travis grant line, 8% instead of 4%. A suggestion to remove the part-time line completely. And, there was one other.
And to move full steam ahead to make sure our department has quality people in it.
Yay. Are there other topics on here that you need, we need to discuss or point out?
I guess I just, I, I'm not going to make a big deal about it or, or stand in the way. I don't support increasing the community services grant beyond the 4% MLGQ. I think that's a, that's a reasonable, you know, reasonable standard to use. And I think we're already going to be struggling to be able to provide cost of living increases for, for county employees. So I would rather, I would rather not. I know it's a relatively small amount of money, so like I said, I'm not going to like vote no on the council budget or anything. But I just, it's, it's not unanimous that I, I just want to make it clear this is not unanimous.
Okay, yeah, for sure. Ms. Masure?
I just wanted to share that I got clarification from the council administrator on the office expenses line. And she stated that in the past, we've used that for services, like KIP May Photography.
Like what, I'm sorry?
KIP May Photography.
Oh, okay, so it's services and, okay. Okay. Thank you. Could you scroll just slowly back up to remind everybody what was on there? I can make the changes I heard. Any other suggestions regarding the budget? Okay. I will move on that and have a new, we'll have a new draft ready for budget time.
Sounds good.
Okay, and next, we have our, so sad, ARPA discussion. It's sad because it's always at the end of the meeting.
Oh, yeah.
We're exhausted.
But, um-
She ordered pizza?
No, but my, I've just been told that my food is hot at home now.
Okay, all right. Well, the cool thing about this item is that we had a meeting since our last meeting with the commissioners, where we talked through a lot of, of ideas. And we're scheduling another meeting with them. So really, what this item is covering is some appropriations on specific projects. So that part's awesome. Let's go ahead and consider the community foundation. And I will entertain a motion, Mr. Deckard, on that.
Counsel, I move to approve the request for additional appropriations and fund 89500000 ARPA of $1.2 million in account line 36712 to support the community foundation grant program.
Second.
Ms. King, do you have anything on this? I have a note that you might.
I spoke with Mr. Cockrell, I have-
That mic, I don't think is working.
It's not.
So you have no mic?
Would you like to come?
You can even sit down this time.
So I have, if there are specific questions on regarding the community foundation, I can answer them. But basically, we talked about this at our ARPA meeting. It's approving future grants for the community foundation. I believe that the sub-awardees would have the same timeline for use as we would for ARPA funds. They will be providing the grant guidelines for review, and that's the information that I have.
Okay, other comments, questions?
Just to make it clear, my, my understanding was that then, in return, the Community Foundation will essentially be reserving $1.2 million as an endowment for the housing initiatives we had discussed before. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
This is huge. This is really, really huge.
It's a long time coming, for sure.
We have talked for a long time about whether or not, yeah.
How to make it happen.
Yeah, this is a clever solution.
Yes, it is.
Well, and I appreciate the patience of all those involved in the housing effort who have waited this out, watched on the agenda as we got to comfort to make sure we're doing it right, so thank you.
Okay, other comments from counsel?
Just a chat.
To look at the check. Got it, okay. Thank you, I'm sure, that would be great. Can you see it?
Yeah.
I'm going to read the comment. Sorry, my mic went. I'm going to read the comment from the chat from Kim, is it Nazith? Am I saying that? Nazith, hello, I must leave early, but wanted to put my comment on ARPA where, when you get to this. Good evening, my name is Kim Nazith, and I'm a county resident. I want to give public comment urging to counsel to use ARPA money to support organizations already in existence to increase jail diversion efforts. Counselor member Iverson mentioned upcoming JFAC meetings where treatment will be discussed. I would like to remind the council that there are organizations here in town, such as New Leaf, New Life, already doing this incredibly difficult and important work with less funding. The, the will here does not need to be reinvented with new projects. Rather, the council needs to actively show support to those already doing it. Please consider supporting alternatives to incarceration with these organizations and others like them. We don't need a new jail, we need investment in community orgs doing the, doing this already and doing it well. Thank you to Counselor Crossley for your endless advocacy, and thank you to the council.
Thanks for reading that. Is there any other public comment? Hello?
Good evening, I'm Mary Morgan with Heading Home of South Central Indiana. The Community Foundation is one of our important partners, as you know, and they are a great steward of our community's philanthropic dollars. So we really appreciate your support for this appropriation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
We do have a comment from someone, Donald Byrd.
Yeah, you do have a member of the public, Doniel Byrd.
Oh, thank you, thank you, yeah, go ahead. Ms. Byrd?
Hello.
Hi.
Thank you for hearing my comment. My name is Doniel Byrd, and I'm a longtime Bloomington social worker and a board member of New Leaf, New Life. And for those who aren't aware, New Leaf, New Life is a small nonprofit that provides supportive services for those who are criminal legal system involved. This includes currently incarcerated and formerly incarcerated individuals. The staff of three full-time employees and approximately six regular volunteers on a shoestring budget have responded to over 700 letters from folks in the jail requesting assistance with housing and substance use disorder treatment applications, social service referrals, as well as reading glasses. In conjunction with the library, they also co-facilitate the Read to Me program, allowing incarcerated parents the opportunity to read age-appropriate books to their children. In addition, every Friday in the Monroe County Jail, New Leaf, New Life volunteers facilitate reentry planning workshops, preparing folks for successful community reentry. I want to highlight that New Leaf, New Life, with funding from the Community Foundation, Jack Hopkins, and the Bloomington Downtown Outreach Grants, with that funding, 80 people have been assisted with services that include housing assistance. The recidivism rates for those folks has only been eight percent. For those of you who have been looking at evidence-based interventions to decrease incarceration and recidivism, you know what a big deal that is. While the council is considering allocation of ARPA funding, I urge you to consider how New Leaf, New Life could utilize these funds to more effectively decrease the number of folks who are incarcerated. Let's spend our money wisely. I, for one, would like to avoid the need for a new multimillion-dollar jail, much like we did to avoid building a juvenile detention center years ago. Please remember the small nonprofit organizations who effectively operate with such little overhead, such as New Leaf, New Life, Courage to Change Sober Living, the Indiana Recovery Alliance, and Middleway House when you consider your funding allocations. Let's do all we can to decrease the numbers of folks we incarcerate in our jail. Thank you for your kind consideration.
Thank you for your comment, appreciate that. Any other members of the public? And I'm seeing no more comments, oh, I'm sorry.
I, I do have just one very quick comment. Is there a mechanism by which the Community Foundation will be reporting back to us?
Well, yes, but I think it's through the auditor. Am I correct on that, sorry?
One down.
That hasn't been discussed yet, but we'll bring it to the Community Foundation's attention and get back to you.
All righty then. There are reporting requirements, as we discussed, yeah.
Yeah.
But the specifics, I guess they still need to work out, got it? Okay. I think we're ready to vote.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you, and now we move to item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the request for additional appropriation in Fund 85, pardon me, 8950000 ARPA of $75,000 in account line 36716 to establish broadband capabilities and Wi-Fi at Cars Farm Park.
Second.
Thank you. So, any questions on this? One of the projects, again, we discussed.
Much needed.
Much needed.
Yeah, I mean, there's, it's, it, the cellphone service around that area is so bad. And, you know, we've already put in some money into upgrading the Wi-Fi at the fairgrounds, and this is just in the same general area, really needed.
Yes, indeed. Many, many parents of soccer players will be thrilled. Any other comments or questions? Any public comment on this item? Okay, I see one hand, but I think that's leftover. So we'll have a vote.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
All right, our final item on the ARPA agenda is additional appropriations.
And counsel, I move to table this item to the August 22, 2023 work session.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Yes.
Bree Gregory from our auditor's office. I just have a general comment. I, upon the conclusion of the joint meeting recently, we were discussing a process and procedure for new projects. So I recently emailed if you wouldn't mind reviewing before the next joint meeting.
Yes, yes, thank you. Seen some emails, I will be checking those. Any other comments or questions on the ARPA? Public comments? And seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you, and now we have our minutes.
Counsel, I move to approve the summary minutes of June 13, 2023, regular session and June 27, 2023, work session as presented.
Second.
Are there any changes or corrections or questions about the minutes from counsel?
None.
Okay. Then, let's have another vote.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. Counsel comments is now the item. Does anyone wish to make any comments? Please go ahead.
I just have a very short one, I just want to wish Counselor Munson a happy birthday.
Yay!
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
That's all. Hope recovery is going well.
Thank you.
Hope to see you soon in person.
Absolutely, come back soon.
Can't wait to get out of here.
I bet. Okay, anyone else? I think we are then adjourned.